Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the one me playing the joint board meeting. I would like to ask everyone to stand and please sit down.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public notice that this meeting for children's the Oklahoma Meeting Act has been given by the board in the following manner. Post it on the bulletin board in the borough clerk's office and email to the retrospect and the courier post. Next order of business, we have been swearing in of new members and existing members.
Do you want to read them all?
Sure. Mr. Renary is a class three member of the council via one-year term. Harry Rosak is a class two borough employee, which is a one-year term. Candy Cleahan, it's myself, class four, four-year term. Joshua Farmer, class four, four-year term. Kathy Walker, alternate one-year term. Sharon Burke, alternate two-year term. Roll call, please. Oh, you know what?
Let me swear.
You can swear here.
I'm going to swear everybody in. This is a little different. Normally, the attorney does it, but because this is special tonight, it's candy.
Special.
Please stand up. Raise your right hand. Stand after me, Mr. Renary. You get to swear.
Oh, do I hear that?
That's right. That's right. So my swearing is the more formal one, so indulgence. I, state your name.
Candy Cleahan.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
Bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
The office of.
Plenty of work hours of work. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
That I will not use my office.
I will not use my office.
To grant preferential treatment.
To grant preferential treatment.
Nor seek personal gain.
Nor seek personal gain.
Favor or advantage.
Favor or advantage.
Not available to the general public.
Not available to the general public.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to be in first.
And I'll put your sleeves on.
And I do the long bird. I do the unbridged.
All right, Joyce, Lorraine, roll call, please.
Ms. Cleahan.
Yes.
Mr. Offerley.
Here.
Ms. Gushen.
Here.
Ms. Thodds.
Here.
Mr. Vannella.
Here.
Ms. Farmer.
Here.
Mr. Roson.
Here.
Mayor Kapatis.
Here.
Mr. Renary.
Here.
Ms. Burke.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Rowan.
Here.
And Mr. Buck.
Here.
Full house, all right.
Very nice.
All right, so the first order of business is nomination for chairperson. I would nominate Candy Cleahan.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
Chairperson.
Okay. We'll take the motion.
Motion by Offerley, second in line.
Gushen. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cleahan.
Abstain.
Mr. Offerley.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Ms. Thodds.
Yes.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Roson.
Yes.
Mayor Kapatis.
Yes.
And Mr. Renary.
Absolutely, fucking heaven.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You see how we have the seating already right arranged?
Yeah. I just want to thank everybody up on this board. I've been doing this quite some time, and we have a terrific board. You know, we make it to every meeting. We don't get sick at sea. Everybody shows up when they don't have to, and everybody does their part. Nobody comes to the knees unprepared. Everybody gives their honest and valued opinion. They go visit the sites. They don't roll off the sofa and come in here and vote on something that's important to our town. And to me, it's a labor of love. I don't get paid for anything I do here, and I like it that way because I'm beholden to no one. I visit the sites, and I give my honest opinion, and I try to keep the town's best interests in mind. And I'm very lucky to have the support of mayor and council. Anything we send up to mayor and council, they always act upon with grace and diligence, and that makes us successful. We could not be successful without good mayor and council cooperating. So I thank you, Nick, and Mr. Renary for that. And I look forward to it for years. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, council.
Congratulations.
All right, next, we have a nomination for vice chairperson. I would like to nominate Mr. Joyce Pockley.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gushen. Are there any other nominations? I'd like to make a motion to close nomination for vice chairman.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Renary and Mr. Vannella, we have roll call, please.
Did they make the motion?
Yeah. Try to keep up this.
They just did so she can't be.
So the one for secretary down there.
So smooth, Neil.
Why do you think about that?
Ms. Cleahan.
High air smooth. Yes.
Mr. Offerley.
Abstain.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Ms. Thodds.
Yes.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Roson.
Yes.
Mayor Kapatis.
Yes.
And Mr. Renary.
Yes.
Congratulations, Joe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray, Joe.
Appreciate you, sure. All right, the next resolution, 2202, is a resolution appointment of vice chairperson. I would like to nominate Debbie Gushen.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for second vice chairperson? I'd like to close nominations for second vice chairperson.
I'd make a motion to close nomination.
Please. Mr. Renary and Mr. Vannella, we have roll call, please.
Ms. Cleahan.
Yes.
Mr. Offerley.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Abstain.
Ms. Thodds.
Yes.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Roson.
Yes.
Mayor Kapatis.
Yes.
And Mr. Renary.
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Debbie.
Thank you.
And thank you for your help. Next resolution, 2204, is providing for the appointment of solicitor. We have Mr. Rowan here, who has served this board very well, along with his partner, Mr. Cogdonier. And I would like to nominate Mr. Rowan as our solicitor.
Second.
And we have roll call, please.
And that was, Mr. Offerley?
Mr. Offerley and Ms. Thodds. Mr. Offerley, what's his?
Debbie.
That was Debbie. That was it. Ms. Cleahan.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Mr. Roson.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Offerley.
Yes.
And Ms. Thodds.
Yes.
Thank you, David.
Board, thanks again. You know, I enjoy coming here. We do have, I can carry a team. We've got a great group of people here. And I understand we're going to have some applications coming in this year.
It's going to be a busy year.
Yes.
And benefit for the community, and I appreciate the confidence you have in me and me, Paul.
Thank you for your service, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Next resolution is 2205, providing for the appointment of engineer for 2022. I do want to make it public that I did receive an RFP from Malumene Associates. I did review their application in addition to Mr. Buck's. The fees were very similar. They were slightly higher on some of the fees and whatnot, but they have to give any consideration to the relationship that Mr. Buck and the board has. And Mr. Buck is also the borough engineer. I think it's very important that the borough engineer and the planning board engineer work in concert to get these applications through and that all the proper channels are followed. I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Buck and Buck and Associates for engineer for 2022. Roll call, please.
Trying it out.
Ms. Cleahan.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Mr. Roson.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Offerley.
Yes.
Ms. Thodds.
Yes.
Mr. Renary.
Yes.
And Mayor Kapatis.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to continue our service.
We appreciate your professionalism, and I appreciate you taking my calls 24/7 when I have questions and when we have to get things taken care of. I appreciate everything. Next resolution, 2206, is providing for appointment of secretary for 2022. I'd like to nominate Ms. Joyce Bento.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cleahan.
Absolutely.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Mr. Roson.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Offerley.
Yes.
Ms. Thodds.
Yes.
Mr. Renary.
Yes.
And Mayor Kapatis.
Yes.
Thank you, Joyce. And Joyce doesn't have an easy job here. She has to man the gate for all of the angry birds that called in and want to know what's going wrong with a particular application and wants copies of such things. And they tend to call her with different stuff that she really is not within her purview to help them with, but she's always gracious, and she always reaches out to me and or Mr. Buck or Mr. Rowan, whoever is the proper person to reach out to, to get our residents the answers that they are seeking. And it's not an easy job because, you know, a lot of people, you know, just think that it's cut and dry, black and white, and we all know that it's not. So Joyce, I really appreciate everything you do for us to make this board much smoother. Thank you very much.
Deer carcasses and...
That's only sometimes.
And fuse boxes, the electrical things.
We had a dead deer on East Sham Road, and I called Joyce. I think she would tell me who to call. And then the breaker, well, the sign out front. I said, "Did you check the breaker?", and she did, actually.
I said, "I'm already dead."
Like I said, not within her purview, but she's not above it, so we're proud of her. All right, the next motion we have is 2207, which is a resolution providing for designation of first and second alternate members of the board for 2022, and we actually, I think, already did that. We memorialize it with Kathy Walker being an alternate for a one-term, one-year term, I'm sorry, and Sharon Burke being an alternate for a two-year term. And we thank you for coming on board with the board doing your intellect and your opinions, and we are not, we're not somebody that wants to provide a new list. We want people's input, so don't ever feel that you're going to waste. If you go out to a site and you see something that you're not comfortable with, you don't need to just agree and say, "Just because seven of us agree, when it comes to you, you have a problem with something, you have a question with something, don't ever feel like you need to just go with the flow, because you know. And we want you to truly be a full member of this board, and we appreciate you volunteering your time. Thank you very much." I know both of you guys, they volunteer a lot in town for different organizations, Green Team, Green Manager Board meeting. They're very civilly oriented people, and we're very lucky to have. So thank you.
Thanks for your opportunity.
You're welcome. We're welcome. Okay. Okay. Yes, that was, okay. Resolution 2208.
I'd like to make a motion then for resolution 2207.
I'm sorry. Roll call, please. Oh, second. I'll second. And roll call, Joyce.
Ms. Cleahan.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Mr. Roson.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Offerley.
Yes.
Ms. Thodds.
Yes.
Mr. Renary.
Yes.
Next resolution we have is 2208, providing for establishing regular meeting dates and official newspapers.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
That was Mayor Kapatis.
And Mr. Renary.
Ms. Cleahan.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Mr. Roson.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Offerley.
Yes.
Ms. Thodds.
Yes.
Mr. Renary.
Yes.
And Mayor Kapatis.
Yes.
And just to make it, just to make it clear, it will be the fourth Wednesday.
Correct.
Correct, everyone?
Yes.
Fourth Wednesday. Okay. That's how long our time is.
Yep. Clear enough. The next motion we have is the approval of the minutes from October 20th of 2021. That is because we did not have any applications on the docket for November and December, so we didn't have any meetings. So are there any questions or amendments to the meeting minutes of October 20th of 2021?
Motion.
Okay. Motion by Harry.
Second.
Second by Debbie. May I roll call, please? Says roll call. Okay, we're good. Just a motion. Okay, all business. Resolution 2209, resolution to correct paragraph 3D of the initial approval, resolution regarding the number of parking spaces.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. Steve reviewed this. He pointed, I believe, I don't have the original resolution, but I think I incorrectly stated the number.
I'm sorry, David. What application was he...
Oh, this was for RIPS.
Okay, RIPS, okay.
When we initially did that, I think I inserted 28 parking spaces. Was it 24?
I don't recall.
But the corrected number was 26.
Okay.
All right, here for Steve to review it, and you misstated that on the original resolution, which I think is paid up.
Okay. Very good. I have a motion on the floor to put this 2209, make a correction.
Take a motion.
Second.
Ms. Vannella and Ms. Thodds, may I roll call, please?
Ms. Cleahan.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Mr. Roson.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Offerley.
Yes.
Ms. Thodds.
Yes.
Mr. Renary.
Yes.
Mayor Kapatis.
I think you're staying. I don't think I was here. Okay. Thank you. So you'll take care of that. A resolution 2210, resolution approving site plan with use variances and waivers for family of Runnymede Incorporated and RH Black Forest Realty LLC, 1.9 South Black Forest Place, Block 105, Lots 1.02, 7.7.01.
It should end there at 7.01.
I'm sorry.
That's my mistake.
Okay. 8 and 9 to correct paragraph 3D of the initial approval resolution.
Okay.
No, I have part of the first one.
I'm sorry.
The resolution should end at 7.01.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
This repeated that one.
Got you.
But what about 8 and 9?
No, that...
Yeah, that's...
You have an 8 and 9? Is 8 and 9 in there?
Yeah, 9 is...
No, it is. The correct of paragraph 3D. That looks like it came down from the, from RIPS.
But the 8 and 9 is attached to Runnymede.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, Runnymede 12, I'm sorry.
This is the one from back in October. It was never, we never had another meeting.
Right.
Until now, yeah.
We should pass this first, and then...
Yes, pass this one first, and then we have an application seeking for amendment regarding consolidation.
Okay. All right, so I entertain a motion, a resolution 2210.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Offerley, Ms. Gushen, we have roll call, please.
Ms. Cleahan.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Mr. Roson.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Offerley.
Yes.
Ms. Thodds.
Yes.
Mr. Renary.
Yes.
And Mayor Kapatis.
Abstain again. Okay.
I'll take you out.
Under new business, we have application 2108. This is amended application for the revariety of the condition of approval for family Toyota of Runnymede, 9.9/1.9 South Black Forest Place, Block 105, Lots 1.02, 7.7.01, 8 and 9. Mr. Rowan.
Yeah, Jeff, come on up. Jeff, if you just have any of the folks that are going to give testimony tonight, I'll swear in our engineer also.
Sure.
Yeah, gentlemen, just raise your right hand. You swear affirm that testimony you're about to give this word today is truthful and accurate, based on your knowledge.
Yes.
Folks, this application comes in regarding the consolidation of lots. As you may recall, at our meeting in October, we wanted the conditions, as that you discussed, is we wanted all the lots that were subject to this application consolidated onto one deed. After the meeting, it was discovered, and this, it happens, it was, Jeff realized, I believe, that the lots were owned by two different entities. There was a lease arrangement with Runnymede, the operator of Runnymede Toyota, and a consolidation of all the lots just was not practical. It was, it would have been a catastrophe. So I think Teal and Jeff contacted Steve, and they came up with what I think is a pretty fair resolution, and I reviewed the proposed deed of consolidation, which only consolidates the lots that were part of Lot 105, Lot 7, 7.01, 8 and 9, which were the original lots for the TD, I'm going to call it TD parcel. Okay? And then they're going to consolidate those into one lot with a deed restriction that, I think that was part of the application, if you reviewed that, and Jeff can speak to that again, which is going to be part of that deed, that that consolidated lot, which is the Lot 7, 7.01, 8 and 9, can never be operated alone as a used car lot. It has to be used in conjunction with the new car business that's on Lot 1.02. So this would, if anybody that would ever buy this, if they were trying to put a used car lot in there that was not associated with Runnymede Toyota, they can't do it. It'd be barred from it. We wouldn't have to worry about our zoning officer going out there and shutting them down. It's barred. It's barred by the operation and the content of the deed. Now, Jeff's clients can give testimony again to that this evening, but basically, that's what I think your application is.
Yes, that's correct.
For tonight. That does not negate the fact that one of the requirements or prohibitions that we had in our original resolution was passed, that they cannot store vehicles on Lot 102. That's not going to be subject to the consolidation. That's part of the, I'm going to call it Runnymede Toyota lot that's owned by different, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And the applicant understands that any consolidation that may occur later between similar owners which would consolidate 102, that prohibition remains. They understand that, they...
Yes.
The borough didn't want storage of used lots, of used cars on that.
That's correct.
What might not remain Lot 102, but what was originally Lot 102.
Yeah, all the prior conditions of approval and everything that was agreed to by the applicant,
applicant, everything remains the same. We're just here on the one condition of the consolidation of the dealership lot with the TD lots, which unfortunately at the time, because there are a number of LLCs involved with this that own the different parcels, they have different individual owners of those LLCs. I was under the impression that there was all common ownership. And then there's also a separate business entity that also leases those properties and actually operates the dealership. So they have a number of different LLCs and business entities and they have different ownership structures. So that's why they can't consolidate them, because they have different owners, they can't consolidate ownership. And there's a significant difference in the value from the dealership lot to the TD bank lot, a substantial difference in value. So it's not practical for them to consolidate ownership, because that would trigger, you know, significant financial contributions that just aren't available there to do that. So, and that's correct. So we're just here on that one condition. We'd like to replace that condition where we consolidate all the lots into one. We understand the applicants appreciate what the board, the borough wants to do is they don't want somebody coming in in the future who may acquire just the TD bank lots to say, "Well, you granted a used variance for used car sales, so I'm going to open, you know, Mr. Joe's used car lot here." So we want to try and avoid that completely. And I believe what we're proposing here without consolidating all the lots would achieve it. One, there's a number of notices. One is within the deed of consolidation for the TD bank lots. There's a deed notice within the consolidation deed that references the resolution and also the use restriction, that it can't be operated independent of the main dealership lot, which is Lot 1.02. That's in the deed of consolidation. That'll be recorded in the public record. That also references a standalone deed notice, a separate deed restriction after one report with the consolidation deed. So if a huge supplier, they pull title, they can't say why they see the deed restriction up to the back of consolidation deed. There's a standalone deed restriction in big old letters that come up in the title report that references the same exact restriction of the use of this property. It can only be used as a used car lot with the main dealership. It can be operated independent of that. That's crystal clear in the standalone deed notice. You received a copy of that as well in the supplement application. And then as part of that, even for additional protection for the borough, and this protects the applicant as well and prospective future buyers of the TD lots, that I'm going to attach the resolution of approval to the standalone deed notice. So the resolution will be in the title as well, standalone deed notice and a reference to the deed restriction and the deed consolidation. So it'll be three separate documents recorded in the public record that'll put any prospective perusers on notice that they can't operate that independently of the dealership lot, which is really the basis for Steve's comment. We appreciate that. We agreed to that thinking it was common ownership. Now, we are agreeing to consolidate all the TD lots. And also as a condition of the approval, we also agree to a condition that if any of the owners of the individual lots, the dealership lot and the TD bank consolidated lots, because we're going to consolidate those, so there's two lots. So if the current owner of the TD bank lot buys out the dealership lot, there's an agreement that there will be a consolidation that'll take place then. Or vice versa, the dealership buys out the used car lot, there will be a consolidation of ownership. Also, if both business entities are bought out by a third party, the condition in the resolution will require a consolidation of ownership. So any circumstances under which there's a consolidation of ownership, which is what I thought was the condition when we were here three months ago, if that condition does exist in the future, because there is a consolidation of ownership among the current owners or a third party who buys both lots, and they would likely buy it because it's going to be a certified used Toyota, they would buy everything most likely, then they would agree as a condition and it'd be in their title report that they would have to consolidate the lots as well. I think all those protections will for the borough and the joint land use for the protection that Steve saw by the original consolidation. And that's the only thing we're asking to amend, just that single consolidation, and replace it with what's in my supplement, supplemental application. I spell everything out there as I just described before.
Thank you, Jeff.
So with, after the, after the hearing, worked very closely with Mr. Daniels and Mr. Jeffers on this language that accomplishes exactly what we were seeking in our recommendation of our review, that the used car lot could not stand upon itself because there were so many linkages, especially as part of the use variance of how deliveries and everything else was going to make. This accomplishes exactly the same thing. I would have no objection to the board approving this amended application.
Are there any questions for Mr. Daniels, Teal, or Mr. Fernandez from the board?
Well, I want to make it clear, I think that was the intent from the beginning, that the council wasn't prepared to create a new used car lot license. So by attaching it to Toyota, I think that was our intent, was to keep that, but to also help Toyota expand their business. Only question I do have, I wasn't here for that, that meeting, there's a, is there any kind of delineation between the used car lot and the rest of the properties? What is that?
The TD banks, your fiscal delineation?
Yes.
Fiscal delineation is offense. I don't believe there's a gate that actually separates.
So you have access between the lots, but they're two separate lots.
You're right, but there's a mechanism where, when, after hours, that people become formed to the TD bank used car lot, or they cannot drive into the Runnymede Toyota, Mr. Jeffers, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That was my right call.
Great.
All right, so would it, say, next day you wake up and you're saying, "Hey, I'm selling Runnymede Toyota." That used car lot, TD, the old TD bank, has to go with the sale?
It doesn't have to go with the sale. If it doesn't, they can't maintain a car lot on there. They have to either...
They have to either, the current owner or somebody else that goes and buys it.
Right. Yes.
Okay.
So it can't get operated independently of Runnymede Toyota. So whatever mechanism they have, whether it's strong ownership or an agreement, but if it's not operated in conjunction under the same umbrella of operations, it cannot operate as a used car lot.
Okay, but so right now it is approved for that. So if he goes, say, used cars go right now, everybody wants them, but 10 years from now, hey, we don't need this building anymore. We don't, they can't sell that to, without, I mean, they can't sell it and then have another used car come in there.
Correct.
Can they sell the building and have something else?
They could sell it and it could be, it could be...
I don't know. They couldn't make it in prohibited use. Or if they needed a used variance, they'd have to come back before the board. Or if they wanted to use a very used range for a used car lot, they'd have to come back before the board.
Okay.
And the board would still maintain jurisdiction.
Yeah.
I mean, that's something that current, is that not going to...
No, no, no. I'm just, I figured I'd throw that out there.
He just wanted to make sure it was, it was absolutely on the record and not relying upon a 2021 resolution in the planning board secretary's files.
Right.
And hopefully our zoning enforcement also would catch it. That's why we originally said consolidate all the properties. We understand the limitations for business and real estate purposes. This accomplishes the same thing. It protects the borough that this would just automatically become a standalone used car lot, which would go against our purpose.
And remember, one of our goals is always to consolidate non-conformity lots. If you see all these numbers, we want to get rid of them.
So that it becomes two different line items, right?
Yeah, two different, yeah, two lines in order, essentially, yeah.
So the TD is four now, that'll go to one.
Right.
TD lot. And then the current dealership lot was previously consolidated into one. That's one. It'll still be two tax codes. Got you.
Okay. Jeff, could you be fair? When you get these documents recorded, they're stamped by the clerk, could you get me copies?
Sure.
These one of my thing, and I'll send one to Joyce. We know they got recorded.
And even if those records are lost or destroyed in the borough, you're calling 20, 25, 30 years down the road, they're recorded in the public record.
They'll still be down there.
So if someone, so if someone would do a survey down the road, they went back to the deed, they would see all this. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, those will see it.
And they want to see the deed restriction.
And the restrictions.
The restrictions that are recorded separate.
Jeff, you said the resolution's going to be recorded also.
I'm recording that attached to the standalone deed, because we also have the condition of consolidating the lots when there's consolidated ownership. And I wanted to put that in there so that that's on the record as well. Because we did have common ownership. Now, we had obviously, we already agreed to it in October, we just couldn't do that under the circumstances. But if we, if the current owners do consolidate at some point, like if we buys out his partner and he's ultimately the owner of everything, they'll consolidate the lots. And we have no objection to what the board and the borough is trying to achieve. We actually agree with it. We're just buying, trying to find a resolution here because we don't have a common ownership structure. And by everything we can consolidate, call it, call it Toyota.
Jeff, you said you were going to record our, the first resolution that we picked, the one tonight, is that the one you're recording?
I can record both of them.
All right.
I don't have the issue with recording both of them, because I don't want to create any confusion, because you could pass a resolution, we have a resolution amending it, so I think it's appropriate to do that both.
Okay. So you want to, you want to record the resolution that we're going to...
Yes.
Both of them.
Both of them, yeah. The resolution from tonight should be a shorter resolution, just amending that one condition. So I think they need to be read together.
Correct, because we, we have to do this resolution, so you rely upon all those application documents, so you didn't have to give them to the board.
Yeah, yeah. I'll go back, Dave, and I'll amend that notice, because I've only referenced the resolution from the October meeting, but I'll reference both resolutions in there.
And Steve, we're going to put in this resolution that if it is sold to a third party down the road, that third party has to...
That's already in the...
If you just copy with my number two comment, that's the condition.
I'm going to, I'm, I'm prepared next week.
Yeah, and that addresses the various ways that could be common ownership, that would trigger a potential issue.
If you just take the documents that they submitted and the types of...
I was taking that before the basis of your resolution.
And you're speaking of the application supplement?
Yes, the application supplement.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board, for professionals or for the applicant? Mr. Rowan?
No, we're here to the public.
Yeah. Okay. At this point in time, we're going to open this, getting up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application and this application only, please come to the front, state your name and address if you hear. Anyone from the public wishes to speak on this matter, I'd like a motion to close all the portion.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Offaly, second under suspicion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Rowan.
Yes, this is an amended, an application amending a previous approval regarding the family of Runnymede, Inc., property Lot 105, Lots 102, an individual lot at Lot 105, 7, 7.01, eight, nine, which would be, granting to this evening, would be to permit the applicant to consolidate lots 105, 7, 701, eight and nine, but not required to consolidate 102 at this time. The approval is with conditions that in the event the property is ever sold to a third party, or in the event that either of the present owners become a single owner of those two separate tracts, they will then consolidate both lots at that time as a condition of your approval. And that would include, as I said, any third party that comes in that would buy both lots from the respective owners, they would be required to consolidate, do a general consolidation of all the lots at that time. So we still have the same protection, although we wanted regarding a no standalone used car lot at the old TD, TD set.
And the condition would also be the deed notice that the, that the TD bank site cannot be used as a standalone used car lot.
Okay. Okay, is our motion on the board to...